From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
Then, as you're called up, you'll be sworn in by Judge Bentley, and then you'll take your place on the council. After everybody takes their place, they will proceed with the rest of the meeting. And at that time, Tammy will take it over. So if y'all do not care, I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. And welcome, everybody. It's nice to see a big crowd here. This is very important. I know a lot of these folks have worked very hard to be where they are. And we need to continue to support them in the next few years to come. At this time, I need Eli Williams and Morgan Williams, if you want to come up here. Eli is going to do our invocation, and Morgan will lead our pledge.
Would you pray with me this evening? Our Father in Heaven, hear the voice of your people. And Lord, give us your help. For there are many trials ahead of us, and no doubt many behind us, that you've already helped us through. As we're gathered here tonight, we appreciate the weight of the situation we're entering into. Lord, we pray that you would grant our leaders much wisdom as they serve this community. Lord, that you would fill them with all knowledge that is necessary to satisfy the roles which they are filling. Lord, we pray that you would give them safety in their coming and their going, regardless of where they may find themselves. Lord, give them strength to endure the difficulties that will no doubt arise, and confidence in your word, confidence in your promises, confidence in your spirit, that they would rely upon you as they walk through many difficulties. Lord, we pray that you would make them to cling to you all the more, that in the trials, they would find your strength, lean upon your understandings, nothing of themselves. Lord, bless this assembly, bless your people, bless this city. In the name of Christ our Lord, Jesus Christ, amen. Would you please stand as we say your prayers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought I caught a glimpse of somebody, Carter. Okay, are you reading? Judge to... All right, you'll step forward. I need Ms. Tammy Lewis-Williams to come forward, please. You made this.
I've got a big enough mouth.
Y'all can bring whoever you want to hold your bible. And everybody else, you just bring them on. That's right.
Raise your right hand. I, Tammy Lewis-Williams.
I, Tammy Lewis-Williams.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office upon which I am about to enter.
of the office upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, I'm going to do this in alphabetical order. So next, I need Ms. Sheri Armstrong, if you will, come forward so we can get you sworn in, please.
I state your full name.
I, Sheri Armstrong.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office which I am about to enter.
of the office upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, if everybody's trying to do the alphabet, you know who you are and that you're next. Ms. Candace Ingram, if you will, come forward, please.
I state your full name.
I, Candace Ingram.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office upon which I am about to enter.
of the office upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, I believe Mr. Frankie J. Kerr, you are next, sir.
I state your full name.
I, Frankie J. Kerr.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
upon the office upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
All right, moving right along. Mr. Scott Robertson, if you will, come forward, please.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your full name.
I, Michael Scott Robertson.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Shane Stedham, if you will, step up here, please.
I state your full name.
I, Edward Gainsd.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
upon which I'm about to enter.
upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Okay, that brings all the elected people where they need to be. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mayor Tammy Lewis-Williams.
All right.
Are those microphones on?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear? If we're holding it. So the first item of the organizational part of the meeting is going to be a recommendation to pass Resolution 2025-11-3-1, appointing Sheri Armstrong to serve as mayor pro temp. Resolution 2025-11-3-1 reads, "Be it resolved by the council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, that council member Sheri Armstrong be appointed mayor pro temp, and that she shall hold such office until the next general election or until her successor is elected and qualified." And I need a motion.
I make a motion.
And a second.
A second.
All in favor? And I guess we didn't talk about it. Did you rather everybody raise their hand? Or everybody, do you want to do a roll call? Or do you want everybody to say yes? Or how do you want? You're the one taking the minutes, so you let me know.
I'm good with just raising your hand or however you prefer.
The second item is a recommendation to pass Resolution 2025-11-2 that would reappoint Angela Owen as the city clerk for the City of Hamilton. Resolution 2025-11-3-2 reads, "Be it resolved by the council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, that Angela Owen be reappointed to the office of city clerk, and that she shall hold such office until the next general election or until her successor is elected and qualified. Be it further resolved, that the said city clerk shall maintain her current rate of pay." And I need a motion.
Make a motion.
And a second.
A second.
Candace, all in favor? The third item is the reappointment of the police chief. And I, Tammy Lewis-Williams, will reappoint Jordan Carter as police chief for the Hamilton Police Department, and Tim Wright as the fire chief for the Hamilton Fire Department. And at this time, if Angela and Tim and Jordan will come to the front. And Judge Bentley.
All right, we're going to do all this in unison. All right. I state your full name.
I, Tammy Lewis-Williams.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and I will faithfully.
and I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my abilities.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Item number five is a recommendation to pass Resolution 2025-11-3-3 to reappoint Judge Wyatt Howell as the municipal judge for the City of Hamilton Municipal Court and continue his current rate of pay, which is $1,300 per month. Resolution 2025-11-3-3 reads, "Be it resolved by the council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, that the Honorable Judge Wyatt Howell be reappointed to the office of municipal judge, and that he shall hold such office until the next general election or until his successor is appointed and qualified. Be it further resolved, that the municipal judge will be paid for the above services as municipal judge in the amount of $1,300 per month." And I need a motion.
Make a motion.
And a second.
And a second.
All in favor? So Judge Howell, at this time, if you will come, and Judge Bentley.
I, Ralph Wyatt Howell.
I, Ralph Wyatt Howell.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
Item number six is a recommendation to pass Resolution 2025-11-3-4 to reappoint Jeremy Streitman as the city's prosecuting municipal court attorney and the City of Hamilton's city attorney. Resolution 2025-11-3-4 reads, "Be it resolved by the council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, that Jeremy Streitman, attorney at law, be reappointed to the office of city prosecutor for the monthly pay of $600, and be it resolved by the city..." No. "be it resolved by the council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, that Jeremy Streitman, attorney at law, be reappointed to the office of city attorney for the monthly retainer fee of $500. Be it further resolved, that Jeremy Streitman shall hold these offices until the next general election or until his successor is appointed and qualified." And I'll need a motion.
I make a motion.
Sheri made a motion, and a second.
I second.
Frankie made the second. All in favor? So at this time, Jeremy will come forward.
I think this may be the last speech.
I, Jeremy Streitman. I, Jeremy Streitman. solemnly swear. solemnly swear. that I will support the Constitution of the United States. that I will support the Constitution of the United States. and the Constitution of the State of Alabama. and the Constitution of the State of Alabama. with all 1,000 amendments. with all 1,000 amendments. so long as I continue a citizen thereof. so long as I continue a citizen thereof. and I will faithfully. and that I will faithfully. and honestly. and honestly. discharge the duties. discharge the duties. of the office upon which I'm about to enter. of the office upon which I'm about to enter. to the best of my ability. to the best of my ability. so help me God. so help me God.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a recommendation to pass Resolution 2025-11-3-5 to ratify the continued use by the City of all current financial institution depositories. These institutions are First State Bank of the South, First National Bank, and People's Trust. The resolution reads, Resolution 2025-11-3-5, ratifying the use of current depositories. Whereas the City of Hamilton wishes to ratify the use of current depositories, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hamilton and the council hereby authorizes the city clerk to continue using current depositories of the City of Hamilton's municipal funds. Also, be it known that Tammy Lewis-Williams will be added as authorized signature to all municipal accounts, replacing Robert F. Page. Also be it known that Amy Nix and/or Sheri Armstrong will be added as an authorized signature to all municipal accounts, replacing Wade Williams. And I'll need a motion. Candace made a motion, and a second. A second. All in favor? Sheri's going to abstain. Everybody else is in favor. Item number eight is a recommendation to pass Resolution 2025-11-3-6 to reappoint certified public accountant Alan Cantrell and his firm as the accountants for the City of Hamilton. Resolution 2025-11-3-6 reads, "Be it resolved by the council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, that Alan Cantrell be reappointed as the accountant for the City of Hamilton, and that he shall hold such office until the next general election or until his successor is appointed." And I'll need a motion.
Make a motion.
Say, Shane. And a second.
I'll second.
Sheri's second. All in favor? Item number nine is a recommendation to reapprove Resolution 2020-11-25-7 that will reappoint Riggs Accounting Firm as the auditors for the City of Hamilton. Resolution... All these numbers are mixed up. Okay, help me out.
Oh, my gosh. What is wrong with your city clerk? Oh, wow.
Okay, so let's start over.
It will be Resolution 2025-11-3-7.
Okay, so let's start all over.
Sorry.
Okay, so I'm going to make a recommendation to approve Resolution 2025-11-3-7 that will reappoint Riggs Accounting Firm as the auditors for the City of Hamilton. And the resolution reads, "Be it resolved by the council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, to reappoint Riggs Accounting Firm to continue to perform auditing services and to hold this position until the next general election or until a successor has been appointed." And I'll need a motion. Frankie made a motion, and a second.
I'll second.
Candace made a second. All in favor? Item number 10 is a recommendation to approve Resolution 2025-11-3-8 that would appoint Mayor Tammy Lewis-Williams to serve on the Northwest Alabama Gas District Board. Resolution 2025-11-3-8 reads, "Be it resolved by the council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, that Mayor Tammy Lewis-Williams will be appointed to serve on the Northwest Alabama Gas District Board, and that she shall hold such office until the next general election or until her successor is elected and qualified." And I'll need a motion.
Make a motion.
Sheri made a motion, and a second.
Second.
A second. All in favor? All right, so does that conclude? That concludes all the organizational parts. All right. So before we go into our regular meeting, I just want to thank each of you for coming tonight. We just have a very short agenda for our regular meeting. And afterwards, we're going to have some refreshments. And I hope everyone stays and fellowships, and we just have a really good time. But as soon as the meeting's over, the council will need to stay up here with me because we have to have a picture made for the newspaper. So the first item of business on our regular session meeting will be to approve the minutes from the October 20th meeting. And I will need a motion.
Motion.
From Shane, and a second.
A second.
From Sheri. All in favor? The second item is a recommendation to approve payment of the accounts payable bills for September of 2025. And I'll need a motion.
Motion.
Scott, and a second. Frankie, all in favor? The third item is a recommendation to approve additional funds up to $33,000 to be added to complete the repairs to the sewer treatment header pipe valves at the wastewater plant. And the previous administration had done some maintenance and repairs. And when they were doing that work, they found another problem. They did try to rebuild the valve, but it was not possible to rebuild that. So we are going to need to purchase a new valve and have it installed. So I will need a motion to do that. So I will need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion.
Sherri made a motion, and a second.
Second.
By Shane, all in favor? All right, so that's, that's all the business that we're going to address tonight, but I do have some, some announcements to make before we go. This administration will continue on the same schedule as the previous administration. We will meet the first and third, Monday night, at 6 o'clock, at the New City Hall, and our workshops will be at 4:30 on the Tuesday prior to our meetings. On Tuesday, November the 11th, the City Hall will be closed and City Services will be suspended for that day regarding the garbage. So on Tuesday, November the 11th, do not put your garbage out, put it out on Wednesday. Tuesday's garbage will be picked up on Wednesday, and Tuesday's workshop will be on Monday. So we'll have our workshop on Monday afternoon at 4:30, and then Tuesday's garbage will be picked up on Wednesday. Now, I don't know if it started yet or not, but this week, y'all will notice in town that the new Christmas banners will be go, or, I don't know if they're new banners or not, but the Christmas banners will be going up, and the Christmas tree will be going up at City Hall. That is in an effort to get everything done for some events that are happening in the middle of November. So when you see that going on, and just be aware that the man will be out working in town, and know that we're doing that, trying to get the city ready for some events that will happen in, in the middle of November. So we're almost finished. Before we, before I ask everybody if y'all wanna say something, and before we go out and have some time of fellowship and adjourn, I would appreciate it if y'all went all bow your heads and we could have just, just a little word of prayer for me and for this new administration. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this opportunity. I ask for your guidance, not only for me, but for this entire administration. May we remember that we are, that we are a working family with the best interest of Hamilton in our center. May we remember to treat each other with respect and straightforwardness, knowing we won't always agree, but remembering that we have the same goal. Dear Lord, again, I thank you for this opportunity, and I ask that you be with all of us. Amen. Would y'all like to say anything? Any comments, y'all want to say anything?
I just wanna thank the citizen family that came out and voted and trusted us with your, with your vote and your confidence, and we'll do the best we can do.
All right, if there's no more business, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
And a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank y'all for coming, the Council's gonna remain right up here for just a dip to have our picture made. Go enjoy the snacks, hang around, we'll be out in just a minute.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business. Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers, and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.